Joined by Counselor Gatheres, Counselor Schultz, and Counselor Majuck is joining us shortly during late. So Corey of Council, I hope he was here as well. Corey, do you want to just kind of run us through the details of the contract?
I do. You will not be surprised that I have prepared the PowerPoint to share. Just to walk through the contracts. Okay, so thanks. Thank you, Counselor Green, and thank you all the counselors for giving us the opportunity to walk through this contract. So this is the tentative agreement for the labor contract with Local 280, which represents our firefighters. So just to go over the agenda really quickly, I'm just going to provide very quick background. Then we'll walk through the provisions of the contract, just kind of give an overview. Obviously, talk about the financial impact, provide a quick summary, and then open it up for questions or concerns. So just to give kind of a background, and I certainly encourage Chief Mons, Chief Downs, or anybody else from the negotiating team to jump in. Here, but just to give some background on the fire department, so you know, three hundred and seventy-four firefighters, a little over fifty percent of them that are living in the city. You know, given the pandemic over the last few years, you know, the fire department has really stepped up to help us with so many of the logistics regarding COVID-19. So you know, they basically led the citywide COVID testing for employees when we had it in the DPW annex. They are, they have been, and they continue to provide services for the Syracuse City School District in COVID-19 testing. And really, you know, I just can't overemphasize the importance of that, you know, when we faced, you know, how to do this. You know, really without hesitation, the fire department stepped forward and said, you know, we'll provide the staff to do this because we really weren't sure how we were going to administer this. And not to speak on behalf of the school district, but I really believe that they would have really struggled to keep schools open had they not had a dependable staffing source to rely on to help with the testing for their students and teachers and staff. The fire department is consistently at one hundred percent compliance with the city's test or vaccine policy, so we have not encountered any issues there. And also, at the beginning of the pandemic, when everything was really uncertain, particularly financially. You know, obviously, there were across-the-board furloughs, but I think I'm accurate in saying that the members of Local 280 were the only union to step forward to go beyond that, to offer financial concessions, you know, delaying, deferring payments without any assurance that they were, that it was going to be delayed because it was contingent on whether or not the city received financial support from the federal government. And so they agreed to financial concessions to try and ensure that we could keep operations running, that we didn't have to close any firehouses, you know, because of the financial fallout of the pandemic. And so, you know, then again, I believe they were the only union to step forward to agree to those financial concessions beyond just the furloughs that applied to everybody. And also just some additional context in terms of negotiations that I don't think can be left out. You know, when we're negotiating with the fire department and the police department, the fact that arbitration is an option is important context. So for all of our labor negotiations, you know, if we reach a time where, you know, we're just at, we just can't agree, we just can't make any progress. For most of our unions, that sends us to mediation, and then you work with a mediator, and you continue to mediate until hopefully you can come to an agreement. So the negotiations continue, but you bring in a mediator to try and help you get there. But with the fire and police department, you know, if you decide you can't agree, they do bring in a mediator. But if the mediator is not successful at broaching an agreement between the two parties, it goes to arbitration. And the reality is, it largely becomes out of our hands. And so, you know, given my experience with PBA and arbitration, we did have concerns that we wanted to make sure we reached a deal because the reality of arbitration, given the financial, the American Rescue Plan Act funding, given the news that the mayor shared in the state and city about where our fund balances, those factors matter. Even though neither of those things really are intended or can be used to pay for labor contracts, for an arbitrator, that might not be relevant. And I can tell you that, and you know, that was a topic discussed in PBA arbitrations. How can you say that the city doesn't have an ability to pay when you've got $123 million from the federal government? Well, it's not meant to pay for that, you know, but still. So, you know, again, you know, I, as we walk through the agreement, I think that we'll find, you know, we will make the argument that this is a good deal for both parties. But I did just want to provide that context, that arbitration for fire and police is sitting out there. And so it's even more important that we reach an agreement with the parties so that we can avoid going to arbitration where the decision is largely at that point out of our hands. So just getting into the details of the contract, a quick overview. So the contract term is five and a half years. So the fire department is currently out of contract, their contract expired at the end of 2020. So this contract term is five and a half years, covers last year. And I think that's important because, you know, and Tim will talk about this later, but it does provide us with a certain level of certainty that, you know, we can anticipate what the costs are going to be for the next, you know, four and a half years, including the last year. But having long-term contracts like this are, in general, good for the city because it provides that level of certainty in terms of the financial standing. So the wage increases are three percent each year, and then that last year, since it's, it's a five-and-a-half-year contract, so in 2026, it would be the first six months. That's at one and a half percent. So that is where the wage increases stand. Longevity, we negotiated that it would be effective the beginning of this year. So it would not be retroactive to the beginning of last year when the contract expired, so it would begin the beginning of this year. And I might call on Chief Downs or Chief Mons to help explain this a little bit more. But, you know, one of the concerns with longevity, because I know when I started on labor negotiations, the idea of longevity seemed a bit foreign to me. But, you know, one-third of the department is eligible to retire within the contract term. So over the next four and a half years, a third of the department is eligible. And it's really important, particularly for the fire department, that, you know, we invest a lot in training the firefighters, that we keep that experience within the department. Now, you know, it certainly doesn't need to stay forever, but there is a real cost to the city if folks, when they are eligible at twenty years, walk out the door. There's a significant cost to the city for that to happen. Not only do we now need to bring in new firefighters and invest in that training, but also just the experience and the knowledge that they bring. And one of the things that is coming into play is that firefighters used to have what's called the one-sixtieth incentive. And I don't know, Chief Downs, if you're on here, or Chief Mons, can we just explain that really quickly?
Sure thing. Corey, the retirement system with New York State, the 384E, is over twenty years. You earn 1.6% over twenty years, that kicks in at twenty-five, that has since gone away. So those members have mostly retired. With our pending retirements, we're only going to have two people left on our force that have any incentive to stay past twenty years. So that's why we did what we did with longevity.
Yeah, so longevity is, you know, that incentive, you know, is being phased out. And so therefore, there really is no incentive for someone who is with twenty years and is eligible to retire to stay until twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. And so that's in part what we tried to address with longevity. And so here's the proposed longevity table. So as you can see here, the first column is years of employment. The column that's shaded kind of grayish is what the current payment is. The next one is the, what has been proposed in the tentative agreement. And then also, we thought it would be helpful to illustrate how many people are in each one of those tiers. So as you can see here, you know, in some of the tiers, you know, there's get paid a little bit less, and some of the tiers, you're getting paid more. And we really tried to target the funding that we spend on longevity where we need it the most, which is those folks who are approaching those twenty years. Because, Chief Downs, I think there, is it an eight-year look back? Is that how that?
Your six is a nine-year look back, yes.
Yeah. So, you know, it becomes increasingly important for those firefighters to have that look back. So, you know, as you can see, it increases the more years, but we really topped it out at twenty-five. So whereas in the previous one, it continued to increase until I think year thirty-five. You know, I think just the way trends are generally going, we don't anticipate a lot of members staying until year thirty-five anyway, and that's across the board. I don't think that's unique to Syracuse or unique to firefighters. But this provides some context in terms of, you know, with the resources that we have for longevity, putting it where we think it can do the most good and where it is that we want people to stay. And then, as you can see in the numbers there, you know, sixteen members at year twenty, seventeen at year twenty-four. You know, certainly, we don't anticipate all of those people to stay, but we do, it would greatly benefit if a large number of them were to stay so we can keep that experience and that knowledge. Some other parts of the contract, an increase in the health insurance contribution. So, you know, as you can see, starting in July of twenty-three, each year increasing, you know, ten years more per month for a single, fifteen years more per month for family. Juneteenth, so, you know, with the introduction of Juneteenth as being a holiday declared by the state, you know, we certainly want to establish Juneteenth as a permanent holiday. But, you know, holidays across the board come at a cost. And so it was really a priority for us to establish Juneteenth as a holiday, and this is true in all of our negotiations. Establish Juneteenth as a holiday, but not increase the total number of holidays. And so we were able to do that with the fire department, where they let go of one holiday, replace it with Juneteenth. So that way, there's not an additional cost to the city in order to incorporate Juneteenth, which obviously we wanted to do. Overtime pay, so this is a reduction, you know, and it's pretty standard in all of labor, I think, that, that four hours is the minimum. That if you're called in at a minimum, you would get paid for four hours, but we were able to negotiate a reduction to two hours in terms of the minimum. So, you know, if there's only two hours worth of work, then they wouldn't be getting paid for the standard four. And then there's some minor additional medical certificates stipends that we can, we can go into a little bit later. But I really wanted to spend time on our certification program because I know this is, you know, our contract negotiations are driven by what is a priority. You know, certainly, things like healthcare contributions in Juneteenth are a priority for the administration, but even more importantly, the leadership of the fire department. And what are those things that we can identify that are mutually beneficial? All contracts cost money, they just do. But we want to put that funding in a place that's beneficial to both the leadership of the fire department, the administration, and the actual membership. And so we think we really struck that balance here. But I'm going to turn it over to Chief Downs, I believe, to walk us through the certification.
Good afternoon, everyone. Dan Downs, First Deputy Chief of Fire. Our incentive program, what we found in our ranks was a lack of technical training and leadership training. And in order for us to fund that through our operational budget was too immense to be able to do. So we decided to take a different approach and incentivize it so members can go on their own time and further their education, but specific to firefighting. So what we have laid out in the, in the screen is basically technical rescue, a multitude of hazardous materials, confined space, trench rescue, advanced trench rescue, structural collapse, water rescue, swift water, and high-angle rope rescue. So we asked, we're going to ask the members to, as they get one certification, they get a certain portion, which would be one percent up through and capping out, not to compound, up to four percent of a top-grade firefighter base. The other incentive is for officer training, fire officer and fire instructor. The whole basis for this program is when someone comes into our ranks, some people want to move up the chain. Some just enjoy working, I guess you would call it a blue-collar job and working hard. We want those people to progress, whether they want to go horizontal or vertical, and keep getting better for us. And when we talked to Local 280, I think this was a different concept, and I think that they have embraced it already from what we're hearing. So that's the basis for that. I can go further if you'd like, Corey, but I don't want to be long with it.
Yeah, I'd say, I mean, I, you know, I think this provides an overview, we can come back to it, but I just want to make sure we get through the, through the other one. So, you know, as you can see, as the percentages increase, and that's, you know, based on the, that's based on this percentage on salary. They don't, they do not compound, so as you move up the level, that's the level that you're at. But, you know, all the way up to level four, in which it's a bachelor's degree in fire protection technology. So, you know, these are certifications that the leadership of the fire department really identified as a need within the department. And so it was something that I think we were able to agree would be mutually beneficial, both for the members and for the department. So just some additional administrative changes that are in the contract, which are important to us, but probably some of them not as interesting. So there's language relative to a third-party administrator. There was a provision within the existing contract that spoke to the need for the union to approve of any third-party administrator for our health insurance to administer our health insurance program, and that caused some complications down the road. Or in the past, with the fire department staying on one healthcare plan and the rest of the city moving to another. And so we really wanted to straighten it out to make sure that going forward, we didn't run into any issues. Making permanent the cancer screening language, that was obviously a priority for both, both for us and for the members. You know, I think the benefit to the members is obvious, and also, obviously, for the city, the sooner we can catch cancer screening, which firefighters are at an elevated risk. To, you know, the, the, the more we're, that preventative care is important, both from just a human being perspective, but also from a cost perspective. Some changes made to standby pay, shift schedules for staff personnel, just some clarity on arbitration process. I don't believe it was really clearly spelled out in the contract, how the arbitration process would work. And bulletin board, which was not a super controversial, but, you know, just to kind of give you the breadth of things that are discussed in contract negotiations. Everything from, you know, wage increases to what goes on a bulletin board. And so the only item that is eligible for retroactivity to the start of the contract term, so to January first of 2021, are the wage increases. So none of the other things are retroactive. And now I'm going to turn it over to Director Rudd to walk through the financials.
Thanks, Corey. So to at least a subset of the group that's on the finance committee, these are the same numbers that we went over in more detail a while back. So this table, it just shows the cost of the COLAs. Most of the cost is the COLAs, so it's a three percent increase each year. When you work out the bottom-line number, it's basically a three-and-a-half percent increase in our overall cost each year. So it's sort of like three percent COLA, half a percent, a mix of all the other stuff. So this just shows we're roughly increasing by 1.1 million a year to the next five and a half years. Any questions on the COLAs? This is the longevity. The longevity is largely based on, you saw the numbers, the table that had the old longevity rates, new longevity rates, and the number of individuals within each bucket. So this shows you what the baseline was with the old table, what the baseline is with the new table. And I forget the year at which we pull people out, but there's a cap where we say they don't go on forever. I can look that up if anybody really cares, but roughly, it doesn't start for the first year, it starts in the second year. And it starts like now, I got, what's the?
Yeah.
One, one, twenty-two, right now.
Yep.
So you can see it's roughly $150,000 a year. The next one, these are the incentives for education and training. There is so much estimating into how many people will get it. So this is a back and forth with the department to estimate the number that would be getting each level. The more, the higher level certification you get, the bigger the pay incentive is. So this plugs in our best estimates of the number of people based on their pay rates. And you can see it increases as we move forward because more people get them. So it's kind of like initially only 150,000, and then as more people do the training that's required, the cost of this goes up. And if more people were to do it than we've anticipated, then the cost would be higher. This is the medical certification. So here you can see the number, the number of folks that we estimate would complete. Again, as more time passes, we have more people completing. The BLS and the ALS are more specific and more involved, so we don't anticipate as many people doing that, even with the incentive. So this is like $30,000 a year, roughly. And this just summarizes everything with the FICA and pension contributions added. So you can see we're increasing by a million and a half year one, another two million almost in year two, another two million in year three. Roughly $2 million a year, which all works out to about three-and-a-half percent increase bottom line each year over the course of the time period. With that, I would answer any questions you have about the cost, or I'll kick it back to Corey.
Okay, thanks, Tim. So just summarizing real quick before we move to questions and comments. You know, we believe that this agreement is good for both the city and for our firefighters. So there are the three percent raises, you know, obviously, I think everybody's familiar with the services that the Syracuse Fire Department provides. But I think the pandemic has really heightened our awareness of, you know, how much we depend on them and how willing they are to step up in times of need. Especially given the unprecedented times of the pandemic. You know, the continued improvements in service, it provides stability and predictability in terms of the finances, given the length of the contract. You know, we try to anticipate and offset the impact of upcoming retirements, which Chief Downs touched on. And then obviously, the training and certification, so we can ensure that our firefighters are certified and trained in the various challenges that they face in the emergency situations they run into. And that is all. And I can pull this up, you know, as people need, but for now, I'm going to stop sharing. Thank you.
Majuck, I'll take it over to you.
Thanks, Counselor Green. Corey, Chief, Tim, thank you for, for the presentation. I think, you know, certainly a great discussion to, to have today. As we know, you know, firefighters are a lifeline for this city. And, you know, got to find a way to make sure that we take, take good care of them, you know. So I'm happy to be in this discussion. Now, I have, I have a few questions before I kick it back to other counselors, Counselor Green. One is, we spoke of longevity. Tim, did we ever, you know, come up with a number as to what longevity alone would cost?
Yes, the longevity cost $137,000 in the first year, you got that one, hold on, Corey. $143,000 in the second year, $161,000 in the fourth, so on and so forth, so.
So a total, it's, did we add it up yet, or?
This is the total. Corey, if you go back to your longevity, the initial description.
Okay.
Now, this shows the, yeah, the one with the table, yeah. So this shows the blue was the, what the longevity payments currently are. This, to the right, shows the payments as they will be. And the right shows the number of members that are in each bucket. And then there's an additional slide two that has the other part of the table. It does the same. So essentially, if you were to say sixteen members times nineteen-hundred, and you do that for everything, you get the total cost of original. If you did that, five, sixteen members at twenty-five-hundred, do that for each of the new, you add it all up, that equals the numbers with some assumptions that people who age up potentially retire regardless. But largely, that gives you these numbers.
Okay. Corey, you know, and I think at some point, we talked about it as well, as to why we are starting longevity at seven years. Is there a particular reason why that is the case instead of it being at eighteen years?
I mean, so, well, I think, you know, to start it at eighteen, I think, you know, would, in terms of the look back for folks who are in the later retirement tiers. You know, we wanted to try and create more of an incentive for them to stay longer, and starting in at eighteen might be a little bit late for them. But also, you know, in part, the existing longevity schedule that currently exists in the contract starts at year seven. Longevity payments start at year seven. And so, you know, if, I'm sure if the administration could start completely fresh and write a new longevity schedule, we might structure it differently. But we also have to work with what's existing in the contract. And honestly, what the membership of 280 is, is the, you know, the negotiators are willing to agree to. So, you know, although we weren't able to move the time, the year at which it starts, you know, our new schedule does reduce the number of payments that folks get at year nine and 10. You know, they would be getting $700, instead, they're getting $500 on the proposed longevity. So, you know, it's, it's obviously negotiations are a series of give and takes. And so although we weren't able to move the years, in part because that's what's already existing in the contract, we were able to reduce some of the amounts for those officers with less, those firefighters with less, less years that, you know, perhaps longevity is not, not entirely intended for them.
Yeah, because I was just trying to understand the, you know, and I mean, we got to take off firefighters, of course. But I was trying to understand the logic of incentivizing somebody that has only been on the force at seven years. You know, it's versus eighteen, I mean, if they stay on the force for eighteen years, I would understand as to why we want to keep them. And want them to stay so they, you know, that's, that's, that's a win-win in that sense, right?
Sure.
But I'm trying to understand as to why we would incentivize somebody that has been on the force seven years, where they going, right? It's, it's, it's that kind of a thing. And, and I guess with that, you know, you could also make the argument that, you know, you know, for their overtime payment, they, they are giving up two hours from the prior contract, right? I guess you could, you could, there could be a reason to do that.
Yeah.
But, you know, I think I'll give the chance to other counselors to follow up. As you know, we had discussion before. So Counselor Green, I would yield.
Thank you, Counselor Majuck.
Hey, Counselor, other counselors have a question?
I think it looks, looks pretty good to me. As far as everything has been written out and everything, I can, I can kind of agree with some of the things. There's just a couple of things I want to look at later on, so if I can just get a copy of that.
Of course, yeah. I forgot to mention at the top, I will share the PowerPoint presentation and all the supporting documents right after this meeting.
Appreciate it, and I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Other counselors?
Counting on me, Counselor Green?
Anyone that wants to jump in?
I, I admire the fire department and what they've given to the city. Certainly, they're one of the departments that we always call upon in case, in, in case of any emergency, and they said, it seems to always fill the gap. They seem to be in the second council district quite a bit. There's no doubt about their dedication to the city, and I will vote in favor of this contract. I just want to be, I just want to be cognizant, and I also want to let some of our, maybe our newer colleagues know that this is one of those situations where there's certainly a department that deserves a raise, and I certainly will vote to give them a raise. But we will have to be, of course, with administration, we'll have to work on the bottom line. And the bottom line was put forward by Mr. Rudd, our budget director, you know, we'll have to come up with $2 million. And that will involve a severe and a direct look at our, at our upcoming budget. At some point, the ARPA money will go away. While we are making great progress in the neighborhoods as far as building homes and housing, that revenue from taxable income will slowly come online. So I just want to be, there are other options, including raising taxes, that we might have to. So I just want to be, there are other options, including raising taxes that we might have to contemplate. But this is part of the tough decisions that we'll have to make in the future. So not to put a damper on anything, and I, like I said before, I think the fire department and the men who work, and men and women who work for the city fire department deserve a raise. And they are certainly at the front line of a, of a lot of our issues that we face on a daily basis in the neighborhood. So so I guess we'll have to start making some tough decisions. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
I got one other question, too. That's what I meant to ask. When was the last time that the fire department had a raise? And how, how much of it, what percentage was it? I don't know if I missed that part. I was kind of doing two things at one time as well.
Oh, no, that's okay. I I don't think I mentioned it. And I'm not sure, I mean, the, they would have received one in the last contract. But I actually, I'm not sure if Chief Downs or Chief Mons have it at the ready. We could certainly track that down for you, Counselor, a copy of the last contract to see what their, what the increase was in the last one. I don't have it right in front of me at the moment.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is Council Rashida Caldwell. I would like to also say my personal experience with the firefighters are amazing. And just to know, just to make sure that everyone knows and the public knows all the things that the firefighters do. They're in the community, they're educating, they're visiting the schools, they come to the community centers. These are people that I have reached out to me personally and I've asked them to come to educate. They're supporting our, our services, they're doing the fires, they're the first responders. So our firefighters are amazing. I am happy that we can say we're like one of the top fire, what is it, Chief Mons? Do rank number top one or something, fires firefighters in the nation or something. This is awesome, and I think it is time for them to have a raise. They do a lot, and it's not just the fires, right? They're educating, they're our first responders, they come before our EMTs come, I mean, before our AMR comes, the firefighters are there. So I just wanted to give shout out to the firefighters at the community and the committee that is doing a great job with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
I'd like to echo Counselor Caldwell and Counselor Hogan's sentiment, too, and thank the department for their dedication commitment, especially as Corey said during the pandemic. So thank you all, and I will absolutely be a yes.
Thank you, Counselor.
Yes, Chief, Chief, you, and Corey mentioned earlier that third, third of the firefighters are eligible to retire. And do we, do we know what does this contract do to that number? Potentially, there are projections as to what it will do to to that third.
I think the goal, Council Majo, this is Chief Mons, the goal is to incentivize them to stay over their 20-year career. They're going to, hopefully, through this new incentive program and our professional development program, attain these skills that we need to perform our jobs. And we want them to learn that stuff and stay as long as they can. So as we bring on new firefighters, they can teach and they can stay longer so we can have a seasoned fire, fire force. So that's the goal is to do that. And I think, you know, talking with the union, there will be some firefighters. We've already had, just with the ratifying the initial tentative agreement, we had firefighters in specific important positions like fire investigators that were scheduled to actually retire this year. They decided to stay another year. And these are fire investigators that, if you guys remember the Fitz Street fire, where four people died and it was a pretty contentious murder case. And that one fire investigator and the person that works with him, they have a ton of experience. And now because of this contract, they're going to stay a little bit longer, and that's kind of what we're looking for. So it's already paying dividends on our, on our end.
Okay, so I guess, I guess to take it a little further, Chief, would, would, would it be correct to say that whatever this contract that we are approving says $2 million? So so it could, it can be a maximum of $2 million or it could be less depending on who retired or stays, right? But would that be fair to say, Corey?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I think that's probably, that's our best estimate right now, you know. But it, you know, it depends on how many folks take advantage of the education, training certifications, how many people end up staying and taking advantage of the longevity incentives. But I think at right now, that's our best guess.
Okay, okay. Well, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop there, Council Green. The last thing I want is for Chief Man to say that we are cutting fire departments. So I'm gonna.
I think I'm gonna take the test as well to be a firefighter, you know, I mean, you know. It's like it's only right, councilors, I think all of us, I mean, Counselor Hogan, I mean, you do got the firefighter look to you, you know, so you.
My age, at my age, it'd be really something if they decided to consider me. But I imagine back in the horse and buggy days, I probably could have done it, maybe.
What does, how do you drive the engine? I'll be, I'll be, you know.
The deadline to sign up for the exam is February 11th, and the test is March 19th. So we've been doing a lot of recruiting. I mean, you guys are all welcome to sign up also. Thank you.
Yes, that's another question for you, Chief. Sorry to sidetrack, and if it's okay with you, Council Majo and Pro Temp Green. How's that recruiting? How's it been going? Have you been getting any numbers off of that? And you know, do we have the number just yet of how many people signed up and, you know?
I I sent an email over to County Civil Service who oversees it to see how many people we have signed up. But we've got a team together, we've been out in the community, we've been recruiting in areas that I would say have never been recruited before. We typically get a group of demographics that will always take this test. I've been working with Council Majo, Council Panjago, we've been reaching different segments of the community that I believe never been recruited before to give an equitable opportunity for all of our city residents to understand how to sign up for the test, to take the test. And when they get on, some of the things we have in place in this contract will help them to become leaders in our department. So I I don't have that number right offhand, but we've been doing a lot of recruiting. And the last time we recruited in 2018, we had the most people to ever sign up for the test. So that's kind of, we're looking to build off of that, Council gathers.
Also, Chief Mons, if I could tack a question onto that, is anybody signing up for the training that you have in place that you're hoping people?
Um, yes, I believe up right now, we have up to about 30 people that have signed up already. So I think we have a maximum of up to 100 people that can actually attend. So we're, we have a couple more weeks to sign up for the test. And then we have a bunch more flyers going out to get more people. So that's, that's our goal.
Awesome job, yay.
Chief Mons and Chief Downs, I just, I really want to commend you on that. That's a really incredible figure, 50% of the firefighters living inside the city. I think that's a, a really a commendable figure, you know, when they're our neighbors and they are contribute to the tax base. So kudos to both of you gentlemen. Thank you.
Any other questions on this from the council? I'll just close by saying, obviously, as the finance chair, any generous spenders always give me a little bit of stress. But obviously, this kind of follows a lot of the pattern that we saw with the police department. The fire departments, everybody that is deserving, really appreciate all the work that the fire department does in the community. So I've been taking for them, the work that you do. So with that, we will close the hearing, and I appreciate everyone's time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councilors.
Good weekend.
You, too.